Okay, we'll just... Let's call this meeting to order.
Councilmember Beard?
Here.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yeah.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones?
Here.
And Mayor Nguyen?
Present. Let's rise and I'd like to ask our Assistant City Mayor, Senator Susan Emery, to give us the invocation. And then, following that, I'd like to ask the... The captain of the soccer team to come up, introduce himself, and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear God, we are meeting today to conduct matters of business, guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought, and speech. Impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being a source of guidance today. Amen.
Hi, I'm Israel Spinosa, and I'm the captain. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I see we have some presentations today.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. The Garden Grove City Council is very pleased to recognize Garden Grove Santiago High School Boys Varsity Soccer Team for winning the CIF Division Championship this past March. Would Santiago High School's Boys Varsity Soccer Team and Coach Shawn Redman please come forward? Coach Redman attended school in Garden Grove from kindergarten through high school and has coached the Cavaliers Soccer Team for 20 years with 240 wins. Coach Redman says this team has talent, but more importantly, commitment, hard work, and desire. Santiago High School and Chino High School went head-to-head in the CIF Championship game, with Santiago capturing the title with the score of 1 to 0. The team's record this year was 20 wins, 5 losses, and 3 ties. The team played through 5 playoff games, not allowing 1 goal. Coach Redman says this is a remarkable and rare accomplishment. In 5 playoff games, they scored 11 goals and allowed 0. The team is ranked 3rd in Orange County by the Orange County Register, 44th in the state of California, and 123rd in the nation. The city couldn't be prouder of these young men and their coaching staff for their perseverance, character, and spirit. At this time, the mayor and the City Council would like to present the Santiago High School Boys Varsity Soccer Team and Coach Redman with a gift of appreciation in recognition of their CIF Division 5 Championship. The city of Garden Grove is extremely proud of the accomplishments of these athletes. We applaud their efforts and wish them all the very best in their future athletic endeavors.
Great, thank you.
Colleagues?
Yeah.
Please join us in congratulating the soccer team here.
That way their council is higher?
I don't know.
He's saying bring him here.
Oh, thank you. Wow. Check it out. Where are you at?
Maybe if you guys stood sideways?
Yeah, everybody goes sideways.
And lined up like that, then you guys can get closer. Some of you guys can actually come up out of here if you're going down. There we go.
You know, where... I'm gonna have to move. You want to be part of the soccer team?
On the count of 3, guys. 1, 2, 3. Thank you all.
Mayor Nguyen and City Council, thank you so much for having us here. It is truly an honor. The guys have worked so hard, they're very excited to be here, and what a pleasant surprise for you to have us. As the lady said, I was thinking about it when you asked us to come, that I guess I've spent my whole life serving Garden Grove, K through 12, 28 years, working in the district and spending every day here. And I believe that these young men are really the best of what Garden Grove has to offer, the city, the school district, everything. They work hard, they study hard, and try to accomplish goals, and they're proud, and they bring a lot of pride to the community. And it's just great to be recognized and be here, and I thank you so much for that.
Thank you. All right, keep bringing home the victory, guys.
Thank you.
Great job, guys, thank you so much. Okay, well, due to public comments, we have Susan Callahan. Oh, I'm sorry, wait. I'm sorry, wait a minute. You're on item 13?
13.
Okay. Not right now. Thank you, Tom. Ben Huntzinger. Shonta Singh, Doig Intermediate.
Hi, my name is Kayla Tran, and this is Roxanne Ordaz. And today, we're here to represent Doig Intermediate. We're also here especially to represent our beloved teacher, Mr. Lloyd Stone, who unfortunately passed away earlier this year. But he also had the same goal that we were about to talk about today. So let's just get started.
Karen Manjona is an 8th grade student from Doig Intermediate. One day, when she was walking home from school, she was struck by a vehicle. She sustained injuries on her hip and leg and was forced to walk with crutches for the next few weeks. If you have ever had crutches, you would know how inconvenient it could be, especially if you are trying to walk around from class to class.
All over in Orange County, traffic incidents occur daily. On January 22nd, 2015, 4 people were hospitalized with injuries in a Costa Mesa car accident after a driver ran a red light and struck several cars that were all stopped at an intersection. On another occurrence, at least 4 people, including 2 children, were injured in an accident in Anaheim on the morning of January 9, 2014. And the list goes on. An 84-year-old man was struck by a van. A 65-year-old woman was critically injured in an intersection. An adult and a child were severely injured when a car ran into a restaurant. A car careened into a tree and killed 2 sisters, and 4 Pacifica High School students were injured in a car crash near school. As you can see, traffic injuries are very, very common, and it's a reality that we must deal with it.
Traffic incidents in Garden Grove are a harsh reality, and these incidents do not discriminate. Young, old, male, or female pedestrians have been struck by vehicles all over our city. The streets in front of our school is very close to a freeway entrance and exit. Therefore, oftentimes, cars tend to speed over the legal limit that is required near a school. The legal speed limit for the vehicles in front of Doig is 25 miles per hour. Rarely do cars obey this limit.
Now, we understand that traffic lights do not magically appear, and that is a multi-step process that takes effort, money, and time. However, it will be worth the struggle for the sake of your citizens and the safety of the future generations. Traffic light costs an estimate of $250,000 to $500,000, including a minimum of $8,000 per year for maintenance. Based on our teenage knowledge, we know that that's a lot of money. Because we know that, we also found out that a stop sign costs $1,000. Our goal is to work things out to fit everyone's needs, so we also included the option of a stop sign. We would like to place a stoplight or stop sign just at the corner of Roxy and Trask, where students K through 12 cross to go to school every single day. I graduated from high school the year 2019, and my goal, as well as all of us here, is that we would love to see a traffic light there before we graduate. Our dream is to walk to the corner of the street, graduation day, and be able to admire the beautiful traffic light that we have all helped to create and the people who are crossing it, who are now safe because of our efforts. We hope that you can help us accomplish our goals of installing a stoplight or stop sign at the corner of Roxy and Trask, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
That's awesome.
Kyle Robert Cook?
Director Speaker. My name is Colin, representing behalf of the administration and the students at Pacifica High School in Garden Grove. One of the main issues we have is our traffic signals on lamplighter and lampsen. We do not have right-of-way arrows. It's not too much of a major problem right now, we have not had any incidents. Fortunately, though, we are getting more and more teenage drivers. As we all know, we're not the greatest drivers. We don't have, you know, the best records for non-accidents. However, it seems to be more apparent that more drivers are coming in, and at this young age of drivers, we do have a lot of reckless drivers. And because there's no right-of-way signal... We do notice that there's a problem of people stopping at pedestrians. We have had a couple instances where people slammed the brakes. There was a neighbor actually on the corner who had his fence redone, because someone actually hit the fence. So I speak in a couple of the administrations as well, and they'd like me to bring that up on behalf of the City Council, well, not on behalf of the City Council, on behalf of our school, to see if there's something that maybe we could do to implement an arrow on lampsen and lamplighter, or maybe something to address that concern. I know there's a couple of members on the board who do have students that attend our school. I'll be graduating, class of 2015, as well as a couple of the other students behind me. But the main concern is that we have actually had at least 50 more drivers join our parking lot, which is making it harder for us to park as it is. So taking those numbers as it is, without proper driving experience, a lot of us are new. I think if we can implement an arrow that actually gives us the designated right-of-way, I think that'll prevent further accidents from happening, as well as possibly preventing a tragedy. Because, you know, sure, we can take steps after it, but if we can, I'd love to see the City Council, as well as some of our maintenance, actually help us in partaking this and help us prevent something like this from happening. I just wanted to see if we can possibly see if we can get that addressed. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vincent Tam. And following that will be Paul Hwin and Vincent Tran.
Greetings. Hello, my name is Vincent Tam, and today I'm here to propose the adoption of a plastic bag ban, similar to Senate Bill 270. If you're not familiar with this bill, it was approved last September by Governor Jerry Brown and prohibits grocery stores and pharmacies from distributing single-use plastic bags after July 1st, 2015. Although the bill is currently under repeal by the plastic bag industry, I believe it would be beneficial for the city of Garden Grove to consider a similar ordinance regarding plastic bags, because it would reduce taxpayers' money spent on litter cleanup. According to the cleanup data from San Jose and Los Angeles County alone, the overall cost to protect California waters from litter is roughly $428 million each year, between, with between 8 to 25% contributing from plastic bags. Additionally, plastic bags are dangerous to marine animals such as turtles, fish, dolphins. And they often eat it and then choke on it, and it also intoxicates our water and food sources. If Garden Grove was to implement something similar to Senate Bill 270, it could also build better habits in the citizens of our community. What I mean by this is that by banning plastic bags, people can become a little bit more educated and aware of what's going on in the environment around us, and thus make a difference on a bigger scale together as a whole. As Helen Keller once said, "Alone, we can do so little; together, we can do so much." It's time to be thinking about the future of the world that we live in and to be smart about the use of our resources. We have to look at what's sustainable and realistic, so I advise you to, again, consider a plastic bag ban for the city of Garden Grove. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Paul Hwin. I'm a current high school student and mentee at a local organization called Project Motivate. I would like to talk to you today about the harmful effects of plastic bags on our food source. Plastic bags are very convenient for grocery shopping, but where do these plastic bags go? These plastic bags end up in the ocean, where they are mistakenly consumed by animals. Plastic bag does not break down in the animal digestive system and becomes poison. Animals are exposed to the toxic chemical in plastic bags in which they develop a high level of mercury. Some scientists believe that the chemical will move up to the food chain and eventually in our food source. In 2012, canned tuna was the second most popular fish consumed in the U.S., according to a National Fishery Institute. This is a concerning fact and should be addressed immediately. As a high consumption of fish with a high level of mercury can lead to cancer, birth defects, and child developments. All of this is one of the many negative impact. I would hope you consider this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Vincent Tran, and I'm a recent high school graduate of Bolso Grande High School. And today, I would like to talk to you about the growing concern of the detrimental effects of plastic bag usage in the city of Garden Grove and the negative impact it has on our environment. Also, I would hope that the council would consider passing an ordinance banning plastic bags. Plastic bag usage is both costly and harmful. Each year, hundreds of millions of plastic bags are discarded after single usage. And according to a study by the Environmental Protection Agency, approximately 88% of plastic bags are never recycled. This is the current state... Wait, sorry. Now imagine, all of those unrecycled plastic bags littered all over our streets, alleys, and parks. That is the current status of Garden Grove and hundreds of other cities in America. Because of this, our city and others must spend thousands of dollars each year on litter cleanup. The plastic bags that aren't collected could end up in our sewers or in the local Santa Ana River that could flow out into the ocean and harm both our environment and our potential food source. Just this past weekend, as I was at Huntington Beach at a local cleanup, a beach cleanup, a little girl approached me, and she said that, "Oh, there is a dead sea turtle on the shore." And I was curious, and I approached the shoreline, and as I approached, I saw this dead carcass. And next to the stomach lining of the sea turtle, I saw little tiny pieces of colorful plastic shards. So imagine if that sea turtle, if it could have died from those plastic shards, imagine what it could have done to our food source, such as tuna and salmon. You know, if... Sorry. You know, and as of today, around 138 cities and counties across California have already banned plastic bags. According to the Equinox Center, if plastic bags were banned, this decline would lead to a reduction in greenhouse gas emissions, energy consumption, and solid waste generated during the lifecycle of a plastic bag. In addition, based on the data collected from San Jose, Los Angeles, and Santa Monica, the counties that have already banned plastic bags, there could be a close, close to 135 million plastic bags could be eliminated each year in those counties alone. So imagine what it could do for Garden Grove and other cities in Orange County if plastic bags were banned. You know, although this issue might not seem pressing now, if we continue to use plastic bags at the present rate, the negative effects of plastic bags could harm us and our future generations. And for the future of our community, I hope that the council will consider banning plastic bags. Thank you.
Thank you. Shawn Ka?
I would like to start by thanking the City Council and the City of Garden Grove staff for having me here tonight. For those who don't know me, my name is Shawn Ka, and I'm the Chief Financial Officer for California Fuels and Lubricants. I'm a CPA with over 20 years of accounting and finance experience and nearly 6 years in the oil and gas distribution industry. For those who don't know, California Fuels and Lubricants, we are a wholesale distributor of petroleum products, primarily fuels and lubricants. We've been operating in the city of Garden Grove since 2004. California Fuels is a major contributor to the sales tax dollars in the city of Garden Grove. In fact, it is a top 10 sales tax revenue contributor. I'm here today to ask for the City Council's support to approve an economic study that will have the potential to generate millions of sales tax revenue dollars for the city of Garden Grove going forward. To give you a sense of the magnitude, of the size of the sales tax revenue for the future, we can look at recent agreements in nearby cities. Just last year, in June of 2004, SC Fuels entered into a sales tax agreement with the city of Orange, which is estimated to bring $126 million in sales tax revenues over the next 20 years. You heard me right, it is, that is $126 million. California Fuels, along with the city of Garden Grove, has a huge potential to capture a portion of this $126 million in sales tax revenue dollars. With your approval, we were able to take the first steps towards forging a long-term partnership with the city of Garden Grove. Without a viable economic analysis study and a new sales tax agreement, California Fuels will not have a viable business to operate in the city of Garden Grove and will be forced to locate to another city, leaving zero sales tax dollars for the city of Garden Grove. We ask for the City Council's support, the recommendation by city staff, and approve the economic analysis study required under AB 562. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Charles Mitchell?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. I've been listening to these students talking about plastic bags, and I agree, they are a problem, but there is a solution. And that solution is not banning them, because there's a lot of people who need to have some way of transporting the items that they purchase to their homes. I have a friend who runs a recycling plant, and what he does is he accumulates plastic bags, and through a process, he molds them into what you would call wall paneling. This is similar to plywood paneling you would find at any home improvement store, but it's made from plastic bags. It's just as durable, it's just as economical, even more so than the plywood. So the idea of banning plastic bags is going to be more of an inconvenience to a lot of people, when there could be a solution. If the distributors of plastic bags, and I'm talking about grocery stores, convenience stores, every kind of store would have a bin right there at the entrance to the store for people to deposit their old plastic bags. We could make a big dent in the amount of plastic bags that are just tossed away, and they could be put to good use in providing new materials. Going on to something else. I have spoken before the council on various occasions and asked that the mayor close the council in memory of certain people. Primarily, these are military veterans who have gone beyond what would be usually expected in their service to our country. People like Walt Ellers and, dare I say, our founding member of the Freedom Committee, Jack Hammett, a survivor of Pearl Harbor. I bring this up because these heroes have all given more than what was expected, but we are losing our heroes every day. There are still many veterans from World War II, Korea, Vietnam, that are among us today, but they continue to serve beyond their military service by going out to the schools and talking to the students about their experiences. Today, history is inadequate in explaining what has gone on in decades before today in the history of our country. These students need an opportunity to learn what has been done, what sacrifices were made to preserve the freedoms that they have today. That's what the Freedom Committee is all about. The Freedom Committee meets tomorrow at 11:30 at Costa Mesa Community Center. Everyone is welcome. There's no fee, bring your own lunch, and our program starts at noon. And believe me, these programs are really amazing. We get programs from veterans of World War II, Korea, Vietnam, even modern conflicts in the Middle East. We have over 200 members in our organization, and we welcome the public to come and meet these heroes. At Costa Mesa at 11:30, Community Center. At Costa Mesa at 11:30, Community Center, it's just off of 19th Street. If you take Harbor Boulevard South to 19th, turn right and then turn left at the next light, you'll be right there at the Community Center. And believe me, the opportunity to meet and talk to these people is worth much more than you can imagine. Thank you.
Okay, and it looks like we have a couple of people that will be speaking during the public hearing on item 13. And right now, we have written communication, 3A.
Let me read that?
Please.
Okay. 3A is a letter from Andrew Halberstadt, Startup Weekend Garden Grove organizer, requesting cosponsorship by the city for the use of the A Room at the Community Meeting Center on Friday, June 5th, 2015, Saturday, June 6th, 2015, and Sunday, June 7th, 2015.
Great, thank you. Mr. Halberstadt, did you want to step forward and speak? Did you have anyone else with you? You can do so at this time.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Staff. Two weeks ago, I came here with Stefan to give you guys an idea of something that we had in the works for Garden Grove. It's called Startup Weekend, as it says in the letter. It's a weekend-long event, basically focused on developing and promoting technical startups within our community. That's one of our main goals for bringing this event to Garden Grove and hosting it here, is to develop and promote interest and talent within our own community based around tech startups. This is a new industry that we can really work with as a community and it has a direct benefit for people as well. One of our other goals is to also promote and develop interest in the City of Garden Grove as a place that would be considered friendly, open, supportive space for people in the tech startup industry, looking for a home, looking for a place that they can really settle in and know that they, they can, they can exist there and create their products and develop them and further develop themselves professionally. To give you an idea of some of the personal benefits, not just the overall goals, brought along, one of our friends who is actually a success story that can really show you guys what we're talking about when, when people participate in these events and when they participate in the overall tech industry and they, they just decided they want to try it and they go to a place where it's available to them, they have access to other startup people with interests that are similar to theirs and the real takeaways that you can get from that. So please.
Hi, um, my name is Jennifer Fiam and I've, I've grown up in Anaheim and Garden Grove all of my life. I've spent half my meals in Garden Grove, eating a little Saigon. In fact, my family owns a print shop less than two miles from here and they've been there since 1987. So recently, I made a career change. I decided I wanted to be a web developer and besides putting up a few websites, coding and programming was extremely foreign to me. Recently, in January, I attended School of Devs, so it was a 12-week immersive coding program, Monday through Friday, 9:30 to 5:30, you just sit there and you code, code, code. And, and through the school, through meeting classmates, a lot of meetups, attending hackathons, most of these happening in Irvine, I was exposed to an expanding tech industry that I never knew existed before. And most of these tech events currently happen in Southern California, in LA, or in Irvine. But why not Garden Grove? So Garden Grove is attracting newcomers every day for the culture, for the food, and just bringing in a lot of people. Tech is only growing at this point and if it wasn't for one friend that I met randomly through another friend, I would have never done this, I would have never gone to the school, never met a bunch of techies, I would have never had the web developer job that I have now. Events like Startup Weekend will introduce Garden Grove residents to the entrepreneur and tech cultures that are expanding right now. And it allows residents to also see working in tech and starting businesses as a viable profession. Also, Startup Weekend will be an opportunity for a lot of talented entrepreneurs and developers to come together and put Garden Grove on the map as a potential tech hub in Orange County to raise the city up and attract a lot of talented individuals.
Thank you, council members, for the time. My name is Stefan Nguyen. Just to put a little perspective on what Jennifer and Andrew have spoke about, one of the statistics of one of the schools that are similar to what Jennifer attended, it's called Hack Reactor, after a 12-week school program, 99% of their graduates receive jobs within three months and the average starting salary is approximately $110,000. So you can see the kind of opportunities and growth that something like this allows. So Startup Weekend is just a way to catalyze the, the value of recognition of education and bring some role models in the tech industry to, to show, especially the young people that I'm so impressed with here tonight, that there are, you know, different options, different opportunities out there and especially in Garden Grove. Thank you again.
Thank you.
So there is a social impact, there's a personal impact, and there's also a generational impact, which Stefan brought in. And we'd like to ask you guys to help support us and to join us in making that impact a reality for our city by sponsoring the space for our event here at the Community Meeting Center from June 5th, 6th, and 7th. We also invite you guys to join. If you've got any good ideas and you want to have some developers take a shot at it, maybe get some apps with your name on it, by all means, come down. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So with item 3A, we, I would like to entertain a motion to approve waiving the fees to co-sponsor Startup Weekend Garden Grove.
Well, before we vote, could we have time to deliberate? Because I don't know if I have the fight to vote yes or vote no.
Sure, generally, we would have a motion in a second and then we can have discussion. But we can go out of order.
Is that, do we support to vote with emotion or what is normal?
The mayor is correct. Typically, you would have a motion in a second and then you would discuss and debate the merits of that motion.
I'll be happy to move it.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Mr. Burie?
Um, could, you know, Mr. Andrew has to back come up to, you know, explain to us what this program, the cost, because right now, we just hear some, you know, what you intend to do, but we have very little information about what is the cost you guys incur for this event and whether you have any other sponsorship for this event?
Sure thing. In fact, we've been working with city staff to kind of pencil this whole thing out and figure out what the costs are that would have been associated with the rental for the weekend. And then we are working with Time Warner Cable and Walmart currently, along with a couple of other local businesses, just for some basic support in areas of food, those types of things, drinks, things to kind of keep the developers fed while they're, they're programming for 52 hours. So if she doesn't mind, maybe Ms. Kim Hui has the, the data or the information.
I'm sorry, please direct your questions to the mayor.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, your community development staff, I believe, has the numbers for the rental information.
Yes, thank you. In fact, the information was provided earlier today by our deputy city manager in a memo to all city council members. However, I imagine Ms. Hoi, would you like to share the information?
Well, I don't know that I actually have the specific cost that you received this morning, but, oh, thank you so much. Well, this event is a little different than most events because it is for such a long period of time. I think you mentioned like 52 hours.
Yes, from about 3:30 on Friday afternoon to about 8 o'clock at night on Sunday. A lot of Red Bull.
Right, right. So the cost for the rental, the rental and the staff fees approaches just under $5,800. It's $5,787. So if you want that broken out, $3,510 of that is actually staff fees and the remaining portion, about $2,200, is the cost of the rental facility.
Thank you.
$5,787.
Thank you.
And this is a cost for the city. What other costs do you incur for this, for this event?
Very little at this point. We're trying to run it as smoothly as possible since it is a pilot. This is something that we are just trying to roll out to see if it's something that would be effective for the city. And we do need the support as a, as more or less a startup of our own.
And if, if it is not successful, then you would not do it? And if it is successful, then how often are you going to do it? And would, if, if you do it more often, would you need the city to support it? Before, before we, I need to know what is your, your long, near-term and long-term plan because otherwise, I wouldn't, I hesitate to commit, you know, the taxpayer onto something that we do not know what, what, what we plan to do here.
Understandably so. So our immediate goal is to host the event once, to see how it goes, to test it out. If it's unsuccessful, we would definitely want to host it again, but we would reassess our options and really find out what it is that we need to do to make it a success. But we would not make the residents of Garden Grove, the taxpayers, incur that cost on a further basis. This is a one-time deal for us. And if it is successful, we would not ask the city to bring that support again.
Okay. Have you also asked other corporate to sponsor the event as opposed to asking the taxpayer of Garden Grove to bear this cost? For example, I'm sure you guys working with a lot of, you know, high-tech company like Google and they might entertain such things. Or other technology companies, small technology company? For example, Mr. Your Friends, Mr. Farm, is that right?
Uh, Nguyen.
Nguyen, okay. He, I heard from the last time he come, he approached the council, he mentioned that he, he is a entrepreneur that had become very successful. Would he, would those kind of business would be entertainment to, to share the cost with the, with the, the city?
Well, as I've said before, we are working with Time Warner Cable. We have not hammered out a complete deal with them at this point. Google themselves support it through providing the actual workshop details, a facilitator for the entire weekend that stays onsite and effectively acts as a mentor for the people who are organizing it in the community so that they can then facilitate it on their own again. They also provide plenty of the, the actual working materials, the presentation materials, the things that, that are put out there for the, the startup developer participants.
The reason that I asked a lot of this question is because I would like to see there is a balance between, you know, the taxpayer of, of Garden Grove would support this project with the support from, from the business community. You know, as, as you see, we, our city cannot just being in this, the business of supporting everyone because we have a lot of charity project that, and we have only limited resources. I would wish, and I really like your project, your idea, but I would wish that, that you take the time to also, you know, solicit the support, the donation from, from other avenue in addition to rely solely or mostly on, on the city to help out. And I, so that's why I wonder if you have tried that?
We have. Like I said, we are in communication and waiting for final details coming through on the, the level of support from the other sponsors at this point. But we are reaching out to you as we have to them, much on the same level, to see what, what interest you have and what, if at all, you'd like to support the event.
I see. Some of the things that I, I would love to entertain would be familiar with, with the, some of the grant from the federal, which they would consider a matching grant. For example, you, you, your organization would raise some amount of dollar and the city would match, you know, one for one, for example, to a certain limit, and I would, I would love to entertain that. Would that be something that you might want to consider?
Yes, absolutely. It's something we can look into.
Well, if that's the case, then could I substitute the motion to do a matching instead of, of supporting the, you know, the 100% fee waiver?
May I ask a few more questions, brother, before we further? Can you define success? And Andrew, you just said that, you know, a success or non-success, but what exactly is success in your opinion?
Success in our opinion.
And also, you can let us know as far as what is Garden Grove looking to get out of it? Are we looking to fill spaces for our empty, you know, buildings to have these startups come into it? What's the bigger picture for Garden Grove?
The big picture, and I don't know if I hold the elaborator on the beginning because I thought I was under time constraints, would be to bring those startups into Garden Grove, to fill the empty spaces that we do have inside of our storefronts, along our Main Street perhaps, or in any of the other commercial properties that we do have available throughout the city. Those, those are people that, if they come here, they experience our event, they see that this is someplace that does continue and wish to continue to support their type of business, their, their lifestyle. This is something that we, that's, that's one of the greater goals. And also, as I said, having them in the area then and having events like this going throughout Garden Grove tends to have a ripple effect throughout the community when it comes to the youth. They start to see these things, they start to have access to these new ideas, these possibilities that they weren't aware of to begin with, and that then generates a whole new group of people who can then start to think about staying in Garden Grove, creating businesses in Garden Grove, raising families in Garden Grove off the money that they're making for that business and supporting the city through their own taxes.
You know, if that is such a goal, that's a very high, very big goals, similar to, you know, big city like Oakland, San Jose, San Francisco, where they have incubator, where, you know, big corporation would sponsor along with the city to, you know, provide space for rent at really, you know, lesser fee and other, you know, corporation, you know, board member of, of huge corporation would come in to mentor the startup to, to help guide them through the difficult time in startup. And I, you know, I'm, you know, president of an IT company myself, so I understand the, the difficulty of that. Based on my experience, most of the startup fail. And so if we embark in this kind of, of idea, which, which I applaud you for it, I think the fact that you are interested in bringing it in here really applaudable. But I think like any other business startup, even this, this idea need to have a well-defined plan for it to, to, to continue through rather than just, just, you know, I have some good ideas, some, some, some good heart and let try to experiment with it. You know, for, for us, for a city, I, I, I am very happy to support that kind of effort. But on the other hand, I would like to use our resource, the taxpayer resource carefully so that we do not wasted it. And I don't want to just jump in and do an experiment here, experiment there without a careful planning and, and going through that. I hope, you know, you present us with a better plan rather than just a very simple, you know, here's a similar thing that we could do and these are some potential benefit that Garden Grove resident could gain from it. You know, I, I really need to see, you know, real, real meet, you know, to, before we can commit our resources to it.
If you entertain just one, one analog to this, you say, cities like Oakland or San Diego, we are Garden Grove, we don't have those resources available to us. You know, it's been held in UCI, it's been held at Chapman University, and those universities were more than happy to provide the space for the people who were putting on that event. Our analog to that here in Garden Grove really is our government at this point.
Thank, thank you. I'd like to open it up for other discussion amongst the rest of the council as well. I, I wholeheartedly support this. I know I initially met with your organizing team, which includes also Uni Pakusen, who is the founder and also a teacher of PeopleSpace. And PeopleSpace is a startup, it is an incubator, and it did start in Garden Grove. However, they moved to Irvine for various reasons. So this would be a nice homecoming for PeopleSpace and also attracting all the tech companies. And from what I've read, priority would be given to Garden Grove residents to enter into the Startup Weekend, which I think is a great idea because I think we have a lot of amazing talent here in our city, homegrown. Some of the students who are in the high schools, particularly in the computer science classes, are already doing, developing, they're already doing coding, some of them are already creating their own apps. And in fact, a lot of the apps that we see at the high schools, they're student-created. So I also noticed that in the memo that staff provided, there is funding available, not taxpayer dollars, but dollars from the particular account called the Garden Grove Disposal Community Donations. Ms. Ms. Kim Hoy, would you please elaborate on that?
Well, every year the city actually receives approximately twenty thousand dollars that is put into this donation account. And that money is to be used, um, to enhance the community and to do events that enhance the community. So this, um, particular event in co-sponsorship with the city would qualify for that. And so we could utilize those funds to actually pay for the staff fees associated with this, uh, program.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. So there,
and you had said that we receive the funds, but how do we receive it and where, 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 where's that fund from?
Uh, we receive it from Republic Services as part of their, uh, contract with the city. And then we hold that in a trust account and then, um, kind of dole that out based on, um, individual requests.
Great. Thank you. So there was no second for the substitute motion. At this point, if there's no more discussion, I'd like to call for the vote.
I would like to ask a couple more questions, Ms. Kim Hoy. Um, now, how much is that fund I, I, I saw in the email, but can you elaborate? How many do we have left in that, in that fund?
How much money do we have left?
Uh-huh.
In that fund? Um, you know, I'm not positive. I want to say close to fifty thousand, but.
Uh-huh. And, uh, between now until the fund, uh, until the end of, until that fund expire, how many more event do we expect to, to, to help? Because I, and I, in order for me to, to vote, I would like to see if we have a lot more, if, uh, more program that seeking, uh, the assistance from the city, I want to be able, uh, to capture that before I, I, you know, allocate, you know, the, from that fund for the, for this project or other project.
Right. Well, the fund actually carries over from year to year, so every year we get a new infusion of twenty thousand dollars into that fund. Um, this year I think we have some, um, funds coming out for the Public Works Open House. I think we have some money allocated for that. Um, but I don't believe that the entire fund is allocated for that.
Okay.
But I don't have a specific amount for you, and we don't have it laid out like at the beginning of the year. So some of the requests come in kind of interspersed throughout the year. And so, um, kind of make a decision based on those requests.
Okay. One question for you, Andrew. Uh, if we vote yes to, uh, help you with this, uh, with this, uh, project, uh, would you give us a report, uh, maybe in a couple months of, uh, your program, you know, how many participant and, uh, and the outcome of it?
Yes, along with pretty much any of the participants who'd care to come along and, and tell you about their experience. And then also any connections that were made that might benefit the city.
And, and the success, you know, how do you judge that this program is a success or not, not, you know, a success or, you know, maybe it failed and, and the lesson learned from it?
Hmm. Yes.
Great. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that I really dig this, and I think, um, relatively speaking, that the dollar amount being requested is not that big of a deal. We're really talking about kind of underutilized space that we have available, some staff time. If we crunch it a little tighter, maybe we don't really need that much in terms of staff time for the whole event. I don't know. But, and, and so I'm not as concerned about the, um, the dollar amount, but I'm just excited that, even going back a few years ago, you'd look around and say, like, where's the future ideas and leadership and vision for the city going to come from? And now, in the last couple of years, with a lot of reimagining and a lot of different stuff going on, there's a whole lot of fresh new faces that have come out of the woodworks, a lot of great new ideas. Um, I think this is one of them. Andrew, I think you're one of those people. And I'm excited that things are happening like this and looking to change, kind of turn the dial a little bit on how Garden Grove is perceived in the future.
Mr. Beard?
Yeah, well, I was going to ask a question, but you got away. Uh, real quick, um, uh, I'm sorry to keep bringing you back. Um,
Need the exercise.
Yeah, but as a pilot pro, project, program, any projections? How many people may be there?
Uh, we're looking right now to be around between, uh, eighty-five and a hundred currently, and that's just straight participants. On top of that, we'll have, uh, panelists, venture capitalists, potentially, um, different people that are tech experts, mentors, who will then be invited to the city, be invited to, to kind of hang around and, and see what's going on. And then also to help out the people that are participating in the event.
Okay, so you're reaching out to for corporate sponsors of some sort?
Correct.
To, okay.
Yes, just to, there, there are little things here and there that we have to take care of, you know, power strips, uh, presentation boards, um, posted notes, you know, just the things that you work when you're developing ideas and throwing it all up on the wall and, and brainstorming.
Okay, and it's mentioned in the report, it's seven hundred, um, well, uh, nationally, there's seven hundred, uh, has been conducted at seven hundred locations throughout the country?
Internationally.
Internationally, oh, thank you.
Copenhagen is one of the big ones that happens. Uh, and then I know that in the United States, it is Oakland, Chicago, uh, New York, Buffalo area, Pennsylvania, different areas there. And then, of course, like I said, here in Orange County, we had one at UCI and Chapman, which were actually helped along by the, uh, the School for Devs, the people that are helping us, uh, put on this event. And they had a, they had a fairly good turnout for that, and they, uh, they seem to think that it would help here in Garden Grove.
And this is primarily promoted by Google itself?
Yes, Google provides the technical support when it comes to getting everyone together in the same room and, and having that lean model. I guess it's, it's also basically a workshop for entrepreneurs to learn new techniques and new ideas for how to grow their businesses and their ideas.
Okay, and how are you promoting it?
Uh, all on the web.
Yeah.
All on word of mouth, Developers Talk. In fact, there are people from, out of the area that found out about it from a friend who told them, and they're on their way in. They've bought tickets. And then also through the traditional news channels.
And with UCI and Chapman, are they also, are they considering having more programs similar?
Uh, I haven't been in communication with them, but I'd imagine so.
Okay.
Uh, you know, I'd like to become the only one in Orange County here in Garden Grove that puts it on if we can make it that big of a deal.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I don't want to steal their thunder, but at the same time, it'd be nice to have that here.
We have the space for it, and we have a whole harbor corridor with lots of hotels and, and big halls that can really host a big tech conference in the future if this is a success. I hope that, you know, we go big and put Garden Grove on the map. Are we ready to vote, colleagues? Please vote.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Thank you. You know, I skipped the council member responses to public comments. At this time, any council members like to respond to the public comments that we had?
Well, I'd like to hope that we get back to the students on the traffic situations. I, I applaud them for coming out tonight. I guess it's getting close to the end of school. I see a lot of kids, or excuse me, students out there, and civics requirements are probably required. So it's good to see you. Hope you're in.
Very Pacific, uh.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, could you raise your hand if this is your first time in a council meeting? Well, it's good to have you. I hope you learned something, and, uh, thanks for coming out and thanks for, uh, expressing your opinions and matters of concern to you. I hope to see more of you in the future, and, uh, we will get back to them on the traffic issues.
Mr. Mayor and Council, and for the students here, you need only look out across the street to see evidence of the impact of other students coming before this council to talk about traffic issues. The, what we hope is temporary fencing through the median on Stanford was installed to channel pedestrian traffic to the crosswalks so we didn't have conflicts all up and down the street with pedestrian traffic. We've also, uh, uh, worked with the school district and church at Stanford and Euclid to see about a drop-off area there for students to drop off and walk across, uh, Euclid at the signals so they don't have to cross further down the street. So living proof, right out front, you can make a difference.
Absolutely, and it's, it's great to see, uh, the principals and, and the teachers coming with the students from DORIC as well. Uh, you can make a difference, and, uh, it's, it's true. Uh, a lot of meetings and, and further collaboration with the school district have, uh, moved things along, and we're still in communication, so that's a great thing. Uh, any others?
Uh, I also would like to comment on that, uh, my son, uh, went to the Garden Grove High School here. He's in the tenth grade. And, uh, one of the things that I, I see, uh, is that, uh, a lot of the time when the parent pick up the student, they are looking around, driving and looking around to try to locate their son. And so if a student tried to cross a street, uh, in a hurry, and the, the driver is also trying to looking for their children to pick up, um, sometime accident will happen. And it need, uh, you guys need to, uh, go back and, uh, let the parent know that, no matter how hurry they try to locate their son, take the time because it just take one second for accident to happen. And there was a, uh, an accident not so far ago, uh, right outside here. And, uh, it, unfortunately, it took that accident for everyone to see that we have to do something. And so that's the outcome of the fence that you see there. Uh, it doesn't look nice, but at least it kept us safe. So try to talk to your parents, uh, try to, you know, communicate that with them. And also talk to your peer, you know, be cautious when, when crossing the street. Thank you.
Okay, we'll transition to successor agency. Please call the roll.
Member Bowie?
Yeah.
Member Nguyen?
Yes.
Member Fan?
Here.
Vice Chair Beard?
Here.
And Chair Jones.
Here. Okay, um, consent items. Who's have adoption of a resolution and, uh, to receive and file the minutes from the last meeting? Do I, and approval of the warrants. Do I have a motion?
Some will approve.
Second. That is a motion in a second. Call the vote.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Okay, we have no public hearings. Items for consideration, item six A.
Would you like me to read that?
Please.
Okay.
Yes. I didn't know if there was a report.
Okay, this is a joint matter, um, for the successor agency and the city council. So adoption of resolutions authorizing the transfer of each parcel listed on the Long Range Property Management Plan. And the staff member is Carlos Marquez from the Finance Department.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, members of the City Council and Successor Agency Board. The purpose of this memorandum is for the successor agency to adopt a resolution approving the transfer of real property assets owned by the successor agency designated for future development and properties designated for governmental use in accordance with the Long Range Property Management Plan. In addition, it's requested that the Garden Grove City Council authorize the acceptance of the properties owned by the successor agency. ABX 126 dissolves redevelopment agencies statewide effective February first, two thousand and twelve. The assets and properties of all former redevelopment agencies were transferred by operation of law to a respective successor agency created solely for the purpose of winding down the affairs and operations of the former redevelopment agencies, including the disposition of its assets in accordance with the Dissolution Act. The successor agency is acting as a successor agency to the Garden Grove Agency for Community Development pursuant to the Dissolution Act. Health and Safety Code, Section thirty-four, one ninety-five point five, Section B, which was added by AB fourteen eighty-four, requires the successor agency to prepare a long-range property management plan to inventory all properties of the former agency and identify the properties within the following categories. Real property subject to enforceable obligation, real property to be retained for governmental use by the city Garden Grove, real property retained for future development, namely economic development purposes, and real property to be sold. The plan, which is listed as Attachment One, was prepared and subsequently approved by the California State Department of Finance. Staff recently held a meeting conferred session with the DOF to, in order to resolve certain disagreements over recognized obligation payment schedule, in disagreements over the ROPS. And in that meeting, the DOF clarified that the approval of the plan in a letter dated March seventh, two thousand and fourteen serves as DOF approval to proceed with uses and disposition of the properties. Furthermore, the DOF indicated that compensation agreements with the respective taxing entities are not needed to transfer the properties from the successor agency to the city. The compensation agreements will still be needed prior to conveying the properties held for future development to private properties, private parties, excuse me. Staff consultation with successor agency's special legal counsel further confirmed DOF interpretation and directive. Therefore, staff is recommending the transfer of the following sixteen properties for future development and governmental use. So to summarize, the first A properties in the first chart are for future development. The first property is a former restaurant and nightclub located at one-two-three-six-one Chapman Avenue. Properties numbers two, three, four, five, and six are all part of the Site C development, which the council approved a resort development project on April ninth, two thousand and thirteen. Uh, the, the subsequent ten properties are slated for governmental use for the benefit of the community at large. Property seven, part property seven and eight are part of the Education Center located across the street on Euclid. The part, the parking lot there provides, uh, residential parking for Cal State Fullerton, Coast Community College, and Concord Career Institute. Uh, property number nine is part of the Jordan Manor Senior Housing Project, which is located down on Acacia Parkway. And that particular parcel is just a small green belt of landscaping. Property number ten is where the former Black Angus went stood. Um, it's about just shy of two acres in size, and it provides parking for City Hall uses and the adjacent civic center uses. And it was identified as a potential fire station headquarters. Parcel eleven, uh, is a small seven thousand six hundred square foot parcel located on Main Street that provides parking for the Gem Theater. Uh, twelve and thirteen are two vacant lots on Harbor Boulevard that were identified for future fire station or future, uh, potential fear fire, future fire station. Uh, parcel fourteen is Buena Clinton Family's Resource Center. Parcel fifteen is a remnant, uh, from a sale from Caltrans to the former redevelopment agency as part of an overpass, uh, pedestrian overpass, and it's not suitable for development. Parcel sixteen is the Acacia Adult Day Care Center, um, which is located just, uh, close to City Hall here. So the financial impact, there is no general fun, financial impact for maintaining the properties. However, future funding may be required depending on the timing of the final disposition of properties. Uh, properties number one, five, six, ten, twelve, thirteen, and fifteen will be maintained by the real property package thirty, and there are sufficient funds in this package to cover maintenance for the remainder of the current fiscal year. And monies will be budgeted for the maintenance for the next fiscal year. Properties two, three, and four are currently being used and maintained by the prime contractor of the Great Wolf Resort, which is Turner Construction, and they are maintaining it in accordance with the, uh, revocable license agreement. The maintenance of properties seven and eight are borne by the developer of the Education Center, which is pursuant to a long-term ground lease. The Public Works Department currently maintains nine, eleven, and fourteen and are already included in the current budget for this fiscal year and will be incorporated for the next budget, um, two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen. So based on the foregoing, staff recommends that the following actions be taken. For the successor agency board, adopt a resolution authorizing the transfer of each parcel listed in the Long Range Property Management Plan for future development uses and governmental use pursuant to Health and Co. Safety Code, Section thirty-four, one-nine-one-point-five-B by grant deed. And as the Garden Grove City Council authorized, the city clerk to accept the grant deed on behalf of the city. That concludes the report.
Thank you, Carlos. Any questions of staff? No? Do I have a motion?
We have a separate motion for each. Successor agency motion and separately a city council motion.
Gotcha. Do I have a successor agency motion?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Mayor?
Great, thank you. Okay, so back to, uh, sanitary and.
Hold on, we need to, we need to make a.
We'd like a motion by council.
Okay.
So you're convening that. I'll make the motion to adopt on behalf of council.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Please vote.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
All right, thank you.
Um, do I have any matters from agency members? Seeing none, we'll turn back to city council. All right, thank you.
All right, we'll, uh, are we convening the sanitary district now?
Yep. Please call roll, Madam Clerk.
Member Bowie?
Yeah.
Member Jones?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice President Beard?
Here.
President Fan?
Here. Uh, let's see, right now we have items for consideration, nine A?
Nine A is also a joint matter for the sanitary district and the city council, and it's to authorize refunding and upsize of the two thousand and two city certificates of participation, refunding of the two thousand and four water certificates of participation, and refunding of the two thousand and six sewer certificates of participation. And Ellis Chang, accounting manager, is here from the Finance Department.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council, and Garden Grove Sanitary District Chair and Commissioners. Tonight I have before you a proposed refunding of three outstanding debt issuances: The 2002 city certificates of participation, the 2004 water certificates of participation, and the 2006 sewer certificates of participation. As part of the city's ongoing effort to implement budgetary savings and reduce costs, the city has identified three aforementioned outstanding bond issues that could be refinanced for significant savings. The primary, the primary purpose of the proposed refundings is to leverage the current low interest rate environment and to reduce annual debt service requirements. I'm going to take them one at a time and present to you the nature and benefit of each refunding. The 2002 city certificates of participation. As of March 2015, the 2002 city certificates of participation had an outstanding principal balance of $17,210,000. The current annual debt service payment, which includes both interest and principal, is about 1.56 million, with the average interest rate at about 5.26%. We can refund the 2002 city certificates of participation at a much lower average interest rate. Our refunding analysis assumes an estimated average annual interest rate of 4.35% going forward. This particular refunding creates a desirable financial opportunity for the city. In addition to the savings derived from the refunding by lowering the interest rates, the city can extract new proceeds of about $8 million by extending the maturity from 2032 to 2045. The new proceeds will be used to address public safety building needs such as a new harbor corridor, fire station, and police building renovations, while keeping annual debt service payments level with no budget impact for at least the remaining life of the current 2002 city certificates of participation. The new proceeds will be used for public safety building needs such as a new harbor corridor, fire station, and police building renovations. The 2004 water certificates of participation were issued to finance the construction of water storage and transmission facilities and other water system requirements. As of March 2015, the outstanding principal balance was $9,240,000. The annual debt service payment, which includes both interest and principal, is about 1.29 million, with the average interest rate at about 4.84%. The, the current maturity date is in 2023. By taking advantage of reduced interest rates estimated at an average annual interest rate of 1.75%, the refunding is projected to reduce annual debt service by approximately $250,000 for the remaining life of the bonds. The cash flow savings are much needed at this time as the water enterprise grapples with the impact of the recent drought conditions in the state. The 2006 sewer certificates of participation were issued to finance the rehabilitation, replacement, and improvement of the city's wastewater collection system. As of March 2015, the outstanding principal balance was $19,460,000. The annual debt service payment, which includes both interest and principal, is about 1.46 million, with the average interest rate at about 4.91%. The maturity date is in 2036. The, the 2006 certificates of participation are not currently callable until June 15, 2016. Thus, they are not currently eligible for the current refunding consideration until 90 days prior to the June 15, 2016 call date. However, since the proceeds were used for new money purposes, the 2006 sewer certificates of participation are eligible for advanced refunding consideration. Therefore, it is recommended to obtain the Garden Grove Sanitary District Board, Board's authorization now to ensure that the Garden Grove Sanitary District will be in a position to promptly execute either a current or advanced refunding if rates and savings so justify. Given the current low interest rate environment, it is worthwhile for the city and the Garden Grove Sanitary District to expedite completion of the proposed debt refunding before interest rates rise. City Council and Garden Grove Sanitary District Board authorization is required to assemble a financing team, which includes a financial advisor, bond counsel, disclosure counsel, underwriter if necessary, and other team members and facilitators. The financial advisor has been working with staff to analyze and present the economics of the refundings and will further assist staff to assess bond market conditions at the time of the refunding to determine the appropriateness of interest rates and other terms of offers received. Staff has been working with the professionals at Urban Futures Incorporated and proposes to retain their services as financial advisor. The terms of their engagement services is outlined in the financial advisor agreement listed as attachment one of our staff report. The Law Offices of Stradling Yoka Carlson Ralph has been the city and Garden Grove Sanitary District Bond Counsel of record and has worked with staff on many previous bond issuances, including the three issuances proposed for refunding. The bond counsel will assist staff with legal and compliance matters pertaining to the refundings. Bond counsel services and fees structure for these proposed refundings are outlined in the bond counsel fee proposal listed as attachment two of the staff report. Staff will consider the use of an underwriter or direct placement bank as appropriate in each refunding issue. If an underwriter is used, a competitive method of sale will be explored for these transactions. Staff will work with the financial advisor and bond counsel to solicit a scope of service and price quotes to select a disclosure counsel, fiscal agent, trustee, verification agent, and others necessary to complete the proposed refundings. The estimated total cost of issuance is projected to be less than 2.5% of the total par amount of the refunding issues. The cost of issuance funds will be used to compensate the financing team members, including the financial advisor, bond counsel, disclosure counsel, fiscal agent, printer, verification agent, and other financing fees. The cost of underwriting and bond insurance, if necessary, will be calculated separately. Upon completion of all necessary groundwork leading up to the actual sale of the refunding issues, a resolution to complete the deal will be brought to the city council and the Garden Grove Sanitary District Board for final approval. It is recommended that the city council take the following action pertaining to the 2002 city certificates of participation and the 2004 water certificates of participation, and that the Garden Grove Sanitary District Board take the following action pertaining to the 2006 sewer certificates of participation. Direct staff to proceed with documentation of the following proposed refunding and new money issues subject to future city council and Garden Grove Sanitary District Board approval: The current refunding and upsizing of the 2002 city certificates of participation, including the extension of the final maturity to 2045; The current refunding of the 2004 water revenue certificates of participation; The current or advanced refunding of the 2006 revenue cert, 2006 sewer revenue certificates of participation. Direct the city manager and the Garden Grove Sanitary District General Manager to appoint Urban Futures Incorporated as the financial advisor for this assignment as described herein. Direct the city manager and the Garden Grove Sanitary District General Manager to appoint Stradling Yoka Carlson Ralph as bond counsel for this assignment as described herein. Authorize the city manager and the Garden Grove Sanitary District General Manager or his designee to enter into all other necessary agreements to assemble the financing team, including underwriter if necessary, disclosure counsel, trustee, fiscal agent, printer, verification agent, and others as necessary, to effectively ready and execute the above indicated debt refundings. This concludes the presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, colleagues?
I'll move it.
All right. Do you have a second?
Second.
Call for vote, please.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Then back to the mayor.
Okay. Same thing, I'll move it again. All right, is there a second?
Second.
Please vote.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Thank you.
Great, any other matters from the board? Seeing none, we'll adjourn the sanitary district and we'll reconvene at the next meeting on March 26 at 6:30 PM. Back to council.
Thank you. For item 12 on consent calendar? Anyone want to pull any of those items?
Yes, I'd like to pull item 12H.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll move the ballot.
Second.
Please vote.
Going to do a presentation?
Okay.
One moment, please. Are you going to do a presentation? No, okay, sorry. Okay.
I'm sorry. Motion received. Five yes votes.
Thank you, 12H, Mr. Beard.
I, I pulled it to, as a matter of disclosure, I work for the County of Orange, and, but I do not work for the agency that is involved with this agreement. So I just want to make that, I do not consider having any conflict with this, so I was going to vote on this matter for that reason.
Okay, I move 12H.
And likewise for me as well, too. I'm also a county employee with the district attorney's office, but we have no connection with this office in particular.
Second. Please vote.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
It looks like we have a public hearing tonight.
Yes, we do. Tonight is a consideration of an appeal submitted by Inge Realty, Sophie Inge, of a planning commission decision to deny variance number V-10, 2015, a request to allow a freestanding sign located at 12461 Harbor Boulevard, Garden Grove. And Chris Chung, Associate Planner from Community Development, is here to give you the report.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, for due process reasons, there will be independent counsel advising the city council on this. Steve Miles will be sitting in for me.
Thank you. Mr. Chung.
Good evening, Honorable Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. On May 13th, 2014, the city council adopted ordinance number 2837, enacting municipal code, Section 9.20.045, and adopting specific standards henceforth known as sign standards for the placement and design of freestanding signs for specified properties located along or near Harbor Boulevard north of the Garden Grove Freeway, including the appellant's property. The sign standards generally provide for all freestanding signs within the overlay area to be monument signs of a specific, specified design size and color pattern. A primary purpose of the sign standards is to implement a program that eventually results in uniform and consistent signage on all properties and business within the overlay area in an effort to improve both the visual and functional attributes of the area, to establish a sense of place and continuity and consistency of development standards, and to create a consistent visual theme in the Grove District to promote its brand as a premier urban resort destination. To facilitate this purpose, the sign standards authorize the city to require the removal of existing non-conforming freestanding signs that have been in place for 15 years or more prior to the effective date of the sign standards. Provide the city pays the owner fair and just compensation to remove and replace a sign with one that conforms to the sign standards. Variance number V dash 010 dash 2015 is a request by Sophie Inge, Inge Realty, for relief, relief from the design standards of the sign standards and the provisions authorizing the city to require the removal of the non-conforming freestanding pylon sign located on the appellant's property located on 12461 Harbor Boulevard, which is on the west side of Harbor Boulevard, just north of Lampton Avenue. In addition, the variance seeks to have the city grant the appellant a permanent right to continue to locate and maintain the sign in its current location, which is partially within the Harbor Boulevard right-of-way. The subject's sign is an approximately 40-foot tall pylon sign and does not conform to the sign standards and has been in place since approximately 1965. On March 5th, 2015, the planning commission held a public hearing to consider the variance. Staff recommended that the planning commission deny the variance because of the five, because the five findings for variance could not be made and because there is no authority for the city to grant a variance for the use of the city's right-of-way. One member of the public came forward to speak in favor of the appellant's request for the variance. Staff received one letter which spoke in opposition to the variance request. Mr. Shonafelt also provided a letter to staff and the planning commission for review on March 5th, 2015, just prior to the planning commission. Following the public hearing, the planning commission followed staff's recommendation and adopted resolution number 5842 dash 15, denying the variance. The appellant filed an appeal to the planning commission's denial of the variance, and the appellant is requesting that the city council reconsider the planning commission's denial and instead approve the requested variance. To summarize the basis for staff's recommendation and the planning commission's denial of the variance, the city can only approve a variance request if, based on the substantial evidence in the record, it is able to make each of the five required legal findings. In this case, staff believes that the weight of the evidence dictates that none of the five required findings can be made. In addition, the city has no authority to grant the variance to the extent it seeks a permanent right to locate the sign in the city right-of-way. In fact, because the Inge sign is in the city right-of-way, its removal is outside Section 9.20.045's requirement that the city must pay for its removal, and the city has the authority to cause the sign to be removed without payment of any compensation, as the sign is in the right-of-way via encroachment, which is by definition is revocable at any time. The appellant is requesting a special exception from an entire zoning scheme and sign program adopted by the city council in 2014. An exception, an exemption, I'm sorry, applicable solely to the appellant and its property. It is also implicitly seeking formal permission to maintain a permanent encroachment within the public right-of-way. While the appellant may have the right to request the variance, it is staff's determination that the variance as requested cannot and should not be granted. Therefore, it is recommended that the city, that the city council conduct, conduct a public hearing and adopt the attached resolution, which reads, "Resolution of the City Council of the, of the City of Garden Grove, Denying the Appeal of Sophie Inge in Upholding the Planning Commission's Decision to Deny Variance Number V dash 010 dash 2015." This concludes staff's report, and staff is available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Colleagues, are there any questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Please.
From past meetings, it's my understanding along that corridor, removing the signs and replacing them, and the city's putting, adding, paying for that expense? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Includes the sign as well, correct?
That's correct.
Even though we don't have to after what you just mentioned, because it's in the right-of-way.
I'll defer that one to the city manager.
Councilmember, we would treat this property just as we treat every other property on the street, irrespective of whether an encroachment's involved. I think that is the spirit in which this council and prior councils adopted those sign regulations.
Okay. If there are no more questions for staff, I will open the public hearing at this time. We have two cards. Any others, please summon to the city clerk. Michael Shonafelt.
Mr. Mayor, while the applicant's representative is coming forward, I just wanted to advise you that because this is an appeal, you should accord greater length of time for the presentation than what you would typically entertain as part of public comments.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Michael Shonafelt, and I'm the attorney for Inge Realty. I've been sort of ushering them along this process. We've been before the city council when the ordinance was adopted. I just wanted to respond to certain points. First, set the table on what we're looking for here. It's a variance. It's not an extraordinary land use entitlement. It's, it's sort of a usual one. There, there is a request to be relieved of the zoning ordinance restrictions. Usually you see it in the context of irregular shaped properties where you may want to build a house, but you can't because your lot is an odd size, and you need a variance from the setback that's in the setback requirements in the ordinance. But variances also apply to any other provision of the zoning code. In this case, it's the sign ordinance is in that zoning code. So the law in this case says you don't look to the physical, necessarily physical constraints of the lot, but you look to special circumstances. And there are plenty of special circumstances that could support a finding of a variance in this case. If you take that corridor from the 22 up to Chapman, you will find that that's largely national brands. There's, there's chains, chain restaurants, chain stores, a lot of strip malls where there is considerable, you know, visibility for the businesses inside the strip mall. If you look at the Inge Realty location, it's an area that's largely been cleared out through condemnation activity by the city, a lot of empty lots, and it really isolates this particular business. So this business, it's a small business. It's been there since 1965. It has relied for significant, if not the substantial portion of its business, on its sign. It does not have a national recognition. So people coming through the area looking for a place to live often have to go by that beacon, that sign, which has been there since 1965. It's very important for the business. That's one special circumstance. The isolation, again, the uniqueness of this business, the sort of the geological, or excuse me, geographical constraints of this particular site. The other thing is the historical significance of this, of the sign. It is an old neon sign from mid-century. In the record is a report by Historical Resources Group, which is probably the most well-regarded historical resources experts in, in LA. They've led to the designation of quite a few historical landmarks, and they have come to the conclusion that it's unique in its historical perspective as well. Inge is going through a two-phase restoration of the sign to restore it to its 1965 appearance, including restoration of neon sign elements that were originally there. And it's been kind of putting that on hold to find out what happens here. With respect to the, with respect to the other findings, they all are pretty much interlocked. I think when you've got the linchpin of this, or excuse me, the keystone of this arch, the special circumstances surrounding this business, the 40-foot sign that has been its only, or its primary source of visibility for 50 years, the fact that when. for 50 years, the fact that when the sign ordinance comes into place, that sign will disappear. It'll be buried to a monument sign, which is at pedestrian level, and will, they'll lose significant visibility down Lampton and Harbor for many blocks. And that will have a material detriment to the economic viability of this company as well, because it will lose the, really, its only source of branding. So, these are sort of the main elements I want you to consider in the variance findings. I have elaborated on these two in a letter that I've put into the record. Obviously, I disagree with the staff's version of the findings. We think our findings are supported by substantial evidence, and I think everyone sitting here at this dais is pretty well familiar with that stretch of Harbor Boulevard. It looks like when the water park goes through, that will further isolate this particular business, because that will be relatively close by. I don't know what else is going in those empty lots that the city has acquired, but I think we can sort of be assured that this business will be further isolated. With respect to the encroachment on the public right-of-way, the city can grant encroachments in the right-of-way. There are four separate provisions in the Garden Grove Municipal Code that authorize encroachment permits. They're issued by the Public Works Department, not by planning. So, the planning issues that are before you are the five variance criteria. The issue of, of the encroachment, that's, that could be handled through a condition of approval that says you got to go get an encroachment permit. Again, that's a fairly garden variety permit. We understand, too, that the encroachment, or the nature of the encroachment, does not materially impair any vehicular traffic, so we think that the encroachment can be granted. That said, we've made it clear on the record that Inge is open and agreeable to a condition of approval to move it away from the public right-of-way and sort of move it further west on the lot. So, I just don't see that as an issue, really, to the granting of this particular variance, if conditions can be crafted to allow its approval. I think that's it pretty much from my perspective. I'm on hand for questions, to answer questions, and I'd like to introduce Susan Callahan, who's a member of the family, so she can discuss some of the personal kind of backstory to this particular sign and the requests that we're seeking.
Great. Thank you. Please, Ms. Susan Callahan.
Good evening, Mayor Winn, city council members, city staff. Thank you again for taking the time to listen to us. I know several of you have heard our story before. Some of you are new to the, to the story, so I want to take the time to go through our business. Inge Realty was founded in 1955. We moved to our current location in 1965 with our 1950s-era sign. We have been a successful family-owned and operated business for 60 years. I'm here representing the family this evening and wanted to appeal to the sensibilities about our business. The sign's very meaningful to us. It's very meaningful to our business. It is important. As people drive by, they see the sign. They recognize that there's an opportunity to find a place to live in, in Garden Grove and surrounding areas of Orange County. And they might drive by at a time where they don't have that need, but they remember where we are. And so, when they do have that need, they, they remember, this is the place I can go to find a property. Every day, we have people walk in. They don't know exactly what listings we may have, but they walk in to see what we do have, and they remember us from the sign. We've been there for many, many years, obviously. This is extremely important to our business, so that people, when they have the need, remember where we are, and also, when they're driving by, they, they stop in to see us. As Mr. Schonafelt mentioned, there's also great historical significance to the sign as a rotating neon 1950s-era sign. It's not a lot in existence any longer, and people remember our eye in the sky. They remember seeing the, the large Inge Realty eye. So, again, significant to our business and also significant to the Garden Grove community. And I think many people that have grown up here have known our company for a long time, or known of our company. They may not have participated or come in, but they, they recognize it. We have tried many times to really convey this information to Planning Commission, to city council, and I'm hoping that maybe some people will reconsider their previous thoughts or votes and, and may understand that, how this fits into our business and into the community. I also wanted to ask a question, because the comments that I usually get back are, well, we're trying to unify the signs so the whole community looks uniform, and it's an effort for beautification. Yet, when I drive to our offices, I see a very large red and yellow funnel being built right on Harbor Boulevard, and that is way more intrusive and larger than any existing sign that's there now. And so, I don't understand why an unproven business that's new to the community, their, their needs would supersede those of a business that's been around for 60 years in our same location for 50 of those, and that we have always been, remained a member of the Garden Grove community for this, for this number of years. And I, I don't understand why a new business is allowed to have this large, certainly non-uniform display, and, and we can't keep our sign that's integral to our business. So, again, I hope that some of the voting members have rethought their position and understood how important this is to our business, and that they will use logic and see the validity of our request for the, the variance or the appeal to the variance, or whatever stage we're at now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, it looks like we have no more comments. Mr. Mitchell?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, because it is a public hearing, I do want to make some comments. We are in the process of trying to encourage businesses in Garden Grove. It's, it's the economic backbone of our community that we have successful businesses, and this one has been there for almost as long as the city's existed. Now, I look at all the signs along Harbor Boulevard, from Disneyland all the way down, and looking at the ones in Anaheim, the monument signs, that far off the ground, if you're driving down the street, and you're in the middle lane, and there are cars in the right lane, you will never see any signs as you're driving by. And this is a shame, because we need to be able to promote and encourage our businesses. Now, the prospect of this sign possibly being moved from the encroachment on the right-of-way back onto the property seems to me the most reasonable approach, because it would allow them to maintain the integrity of their business and still maintain the right-of-way that is required by the city. I don't know how much the city is planning to compensate businesses for making them remove their signs, like, for instance, McDonald's and their signs. But I wonder how much that compensation will account for the business loss of not being recognized along that corridor. So, I hope that that is taken into consideration, the actual cost to the business of losing their visibility. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll close the public hearing this time. I would like to, there are some legal issues that are brought up. I'd like to recess this and go into closed session with the legal counsel to discuss. Is that okay? All right.
Can we do that?
Yep.
Is that something we can do?
We can have just a moment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, we don't, at this time, we don't have any basis under the Brown Act to go into closed session. So, that's basically.
Thank you. Mr. Roder?
Mr. Mayor and council, if indeed you have questions, legal clarification questions, my recommendation to you would be to continue this item, continue the public hearing to your next meeting. At that time, if you have any questions, please submit them to us. We can also bring it back and schedule a closed session with that public hearing. So, in the event, you need to consult with legal counsel on questions, and I want to remind you, they must be legal questions. You don't have the authority to go in closed session and formulate a decision by your body. But that would be the appropriate way to handle it, as opposed to going in closed session.
Thank you. So, I'll move to continue this item.
Before we move it, I would just like to, because what I've heard so far is a all or none, it seems like. Either we have the sign or we don't. I want to ask if we have any middle grounds. One thing that I had talked about with, with our city manager in discussion was, can we have like the eye on top of your building, or something in between where you will still have the visibility that you're hoping to get, and the city still will be able to come to our sign equation or equality across Harbor? So, I don't, I don't like this all or none approach. If we can find the middle where we're both in agreement, I would like to hear some options along that line, if we possibly can.
Yeah, definitely. I like to see.
Councilmember, if, excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Fawn, if you would like to see options, assuming the property owner is willing to work with this, if you were to continue this, we could possibly bring those back. The subject of the public hearing, of course, is the appeal of the planning commission determination.
Sure. So, I'm, I'm not ready to take action on this. I'd like to continue it, and I do have some questions for legal counsel that I'd like to discuss with. So, there is a motion to continue this item.
And I'll second that.
Before we vote on that, since the applicants are here, I would like to ask some questions, some clarification, if I may. You know, we could, obviously, we could do that at the next meeting, but why not asking, you know, those questions now and have them address them? So, could the lawyer for the applicant to approach the podium, please? Now, you mentioned that the, the business would be in grave risk of being isolated if the sign is being removed and replaced with a, with, with a sign that comply with the current size standard. Can you elaborate on that? I, of course, I understand that with a big sign, easier to, to see from a distance, and it would be easier to resonate in, in one person's mind. But many other businesses, who does not have a brand name, name branding, recognition, will also, you know, are in the similar situation, and some of them are doing extremely well, and others may not. So, could you elaborate a little bit more for us to see why you felt that, you know, without the sign, you'd be severely, you know, isolated?
I certainly could, Mr. Councilmember. I appreciate your question. I also am supportive of a continuance and in furtherance of your point and your question. We'd be happy to provide some more information, as opposed to just me talking from the podium here. But I will say that if, if you guys, I'm sure all of you, members of the council, are familiar with that stretch from the 22 to Chapman. And as I said, a lot of the small businesses are buried in strip malls where they will have more visibility and crossover traffic from their clientele who are coming from other businesses that are there. Then, of course, the big chains, the national brands, that's largely what you're seeing, supermarkets and things of that nature, department stores. But if you go further towards the 22, which is south, around Inge Realty, you'll see that the city has engaged in inverse condemnation or condemnation activity and taken out quite a few properties. So, lots of vacant land there. I suspect that that will be developed with things that are commensurate with the Great Park, or not the Great Park, but the Great Wolf Lodge and the Water Park that the city has on the drawing boards. Right now, it's isolated just by virtue of its standing alone in sort of an area that's really devoid of business. And it will be further, I'm sure, because I think the businesses that we're going to see migrating in or invited in by the city are not going to be mom-pop shops anymore along that corridor. So, I think that not only is it isolated now by virtue of just what's out there, I think that isolation will be, you know, exacerbated later by virtue of what will be developed. And I haven't seen what the city has, you know, intended for that area. I do know it's near the, the water park. So, that's what I'm, the main, the main gist of what I'm trying to convey to you and to the members of the council. Certainly, I can provide additional information if the matter's continued, so that you can consider that further.
Thank you. I would, I would like to receive some, some of those facts, so that it would help us in.
Very good. Happy to do so.
Another question. A lot of people I hear is talking about historical, you know, value of this sign. It's been with the city since 1965. Certainly been a long time. I, I moved here in 1984, and so this sign is 20 years ahead of me. Other than being here for 20 years, what other reasoning do we have to, to tie this to the Garden Grove historical? Can you, can you share with us on that?
Sure. I, I noticed in the staff report, there's a, there's an assertion in there, which is true, that it's not designated on any local, state, or federal registry. That's true. But if you look, for instance, in the California Environmental Quality Act, and what it considers to be historical resource that you would have to examine the impacts of, it, those aren't, it's not necessary that it's designated. What, what's necessary is that there are indices of historical value that could lead to a later designation. So, it doesn't have to be on a list. What we have in the record here is Historical Resources Group has prepared a report. They've analyzed the sign. They've looked into historical records of it. They've kind of put it in a context of the historical time in which it was built, which that mid-century last of the neon era. And the staff report speaks more eloquently than I can about the historical value of the sign. But it is a 1955 sign relocated to the site in 1965. So, it was already 10 years old when they moved it there, and it's been on-site, and I think they, I think they added to it in 1965. So, we've got a pretty, an old sign. We've seen a lot of sign ordinances where, you know, these older signs have been exempted. Now, that, I think we asked for that kind of exemption in the ordinance. It wasn't adopted that way. But that would be something that could be considered in a case-by-case matter through a variance like this. And I believe that was, what we felt was the one channel left to us to have it looked at in this context of this kind of request.
Mr. Beard?
Yeah. A hysterical question as well. Did you, did I hear you correctly when you said you restored or considered restoring it?
There's a two-phase restoration plan. Yes, part of the restoration has occurred. It's through restoring the, some of the paint to the eye. I think, and I think they're working on, there's neon elements that would go on that eye. That, that's the next phase that they're working on. And they also consulted, Inge did, with Historical Resources Group on making sure that restoration was accurately conveying the original look of, of the sign from 1965. So, first part is the, is the paint, and then the second part would be the, the neon elements. I believe rotating elements as well. I don't know if they're going.
Does that include the, the, some of the wording principally? I mean, I assume it's changed over time as well, the writing, the font, and this and that. I mean, how historical are you going back?
Well, there's, there's sort of a, a large panel that you can see in the, in the picture there. The most of the focus of the, of the restoration right now is on the eye, which is above that panel, which looks kind of like a small billboard sign. So, the eye above that is the one that has received the first phase of, of the restoration. You know, I might be not completely accurate, but I'm. You know, I might be not completely accurate, but I'm sure Susan Callahan can speak further to answer your questions on exactly what they've been doing and what they plan to do next. You know, there was a, there's earlier photographs of it where it was in sort of a state of disrepair, and that's, that's an improvement. So, as far as the restoration of the paint.
Thank you. Mr. Roder.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to go back and clarify a point for Counsel member Fawn. In terms of the continuance, I just want to acknowledge that both the city and the applicant have legal representation on this matter, and our ability to collaborate or consider other options will be guided by the limitations and restrictions upon that legal counsel. And I want to make that clear, because we do this, have an application, appeal in the process, and we certainly do not want to do anything that infringes upon the applicant's rights before this council, and yet, at the same time, affords an opportunity for some potential resolution. I just wanted to have that on the record.
Thank you.
Thank you. Potential resolution sounds good to me. Okay. Any other questions or discussions? Was there a second on the continuance?
Yes.
Please vote.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
All right. Thank you. All right, 14th Commission, Committee Matters.
The next item is 14A. It's a Main Street Assessment District Number One. And Anna Neal, Senior Administrative Analyst from Public Works, is here to give you her report.
Thank you, Mrs. Pomeroy, Mr. Mayor, and members of the City Council. Tonight, the City Council is asked to approve the Main Street Assessment District budget for fiscal year 1516, approve the engineer's report, adopt the attached resolution declaring an intention to levy and collect assessments for fiscal year 1516, and set a public hearing for July 14, 2015. On March 12, the Main Street Commission approved its fiscal year 1516 budget for ongoing services such as landscaping and minor improvements. The proposed budget reflects no increase in assessments and remains at $19.92 per linear foot. Per the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972, the City Council must approve the proposed budget, direct staff to initiate assessment proceedings, and approve an engineer's report as outlined in the resolutions. The assessment will raise approximately $27,000 in revenues. This concludes my report, and staff is available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff, colleagues?
Do we have to take these each individually?
No. You can take these at once.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion to move all of them, yeah, to 14.
And I'll second that.
A-1 through 4.
Please vote.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Okay. We have some items for consideration.
Yes, we do. 15A is adoption of the fiscal year 201516 strategic plan to implement City Council priorities identified at the City Council study session on March 13, 2015. M. Maria Stipe, Deputy City Manager, is here to give you her report.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. The purpose of this report is for the City Council to consider and adopt the fiscal year 201516 strategic plan to implement City Council policies identified at the City Council study session on March 13, 2015. In March, the city conducted a strategic planning session with the mayor, City Council, and executive staff to identify and address priority goals for the 201516 fiscal year. The purpose of the planning session was to provide an assessment of the city's current condition with regard to its operations, risks, and key issues of importance, as well as to provide a review and prioritization of department goals for 2015, separate from the budget process, and to develop a City Council priority list of key goals and objectives for the 201516 fiscal year. Based on information provided by each member of the City Council, and following a collaborative discussion, the City Council identified 10 priority goals. And we do have a PowerPoint presentation. Are we able to pull that up? Is it on? It's, no. Oh, that's a different one.
Okay, let's have a quick five-minute recess.
Quickly, to highlight them once again, so, our 10 City Council priorities are to hire the fire chief, hire the new fire chief, which is complete, hire the new city manager, complete labor negotiations, and fill vacancies within budget constraints. The City Council was looking to implement web technology improvements that make doing business with the city more user-friendly, and in, relative to that, we will be developing a transparency policy that we'll be bringing back to the City Council. The third goal is to promote positive communication with the community to enhance the city's image and restore trust. And to do that, we'll be developing a communication strategy that will be later adopted by the City Council. The fourth goal is to implement the Reimagine Downtown Phase Two Next Steps. The fifth goal of the City Council, that the City Council identified as a priority, is to continue to pursue economic development, to grow the city's revenues. And relative to that, we'll be focusing on completing the Brooker's Triangle and resolving the issues with the Galleria Project, completing the Grove District Hotel projects, including the Water Park Hotel, Site C Hotel Project, and the Site B2 Hotel Project. We'll be looking to expand business opportunities throughout the city and implementing a marketing campaign with the Garden Grove Unified School District. There's also a desire by the City Council to look at economic development opportunities relative to the Willowick Golf Course and other activities that are occurring adjacent to that property, such as the streetcar project. And so, we'll be seeking to meet with the City of Santa Ana to discuss those options. And then, another City Council priority number six is to develop a five-year fiscal plan and an organizational message that communicates that plan to the community and the organization. The seventh goal was to implement a bicycle master plan, or complete and develop a bicycle master plan and work towards a more walkable community. There was a desire by the City Council to pursue specific targeted neighborhood beautification projects, and also to implement public safety infrastructure enhancements in various areas of the city. And then, lastly, to implement a legislative advocacy program that will supplement the city's current legislative platform and kind of further refine and define that. So, those are the 10 priority goals that were established by the City Council at the study session. So, from that goal list, staff has developed a 2015 strategic plan that identifies and operationally defines each of the 10 priority goals established by the City Council. So, what we see up on the screen here is, is the first, first page of that strategic plan, it identifies the first goal that we just talked about, and then it breaks down into individual elements or initiatives that have defined action items related to them. And then, we've identified the lead department, who is responsible for each of those action items, along with an estimated completion date. So, we'll be working over the next year to implement these priorities. We're looking to implement these priorities according to these dates, and we'll be looking to bring back reports to the City Council on a quarterly basis to keep you informed and the community informed relative to how we're doing towards those goals. I'll kind of just page through the full strategic plan. This is the first goal, so we just identify, hire the fire chief, the city manager, complete the labor negotiations, and fill the vacancies. On goal number two, implementing the web technology improvements, we have action items to implement a transparency policy, implement the new website, implement new open government software, and implement a new Police CAD Record Management System. And then, continuing with our web technology improvements, we'll be looking to implement web access for the public, web access for public records requests. So, we're going to make our public records more accessible on the city's website, automate the building permit function, implement new, a new agenda management system. And then, relative to promoting positive communication with the community to enhance the city's image and restore trust, we will be working to implement the communication strategy. And then, the Reimagine Downtown Phase Two Next Steps consist of implementing a civic center adaptive reuse program, implementing a number of community programs that would take place in the downtown, including summer movie nights, classic film night, enhancing the farmer's market on Main Street, implementing a second Open Streets event, completing the Cal Poly Pomona Mobility Plan, implementing the Earth Day Environmental Art Installation, retaining a consultant for the downtown parking management plan. And then, relative to economic development, we have milestones relative to the completion of the Brooker's Triangle Project, the Galleria, the Water Park Hotels, all of the hotel projects. And then, we'll be looking to hire a consultant to do a SWOT analysis, to look at what economic development opportunities we have in the city, within the city, and how we would work to pursue those. And then, we have milestones relative to the marketing campaign with the Garden Grove Unified School District, and then, development and economic collaboration with Santa Ana relative to Willowick, the Willowick Golf Course, the new streetcar line that is proposed, or it's actually moving forward, and then, the transit-oriented development. And we'll keep going on and on here, but we have our bicycle master plan, our more walkable community, and then we have our dates associated with completion of those milestones. And then, neighborhood beautification. The projects that are proposed are improvements to the East Gate, East Gate Park, so there'll be proposed new play equipment and trail and exercise equipment, and then, improvements to the neighborhood in District 163, which is the Bayport Laguna area where the, where presently scheduled to do a community cleanup event later this month. And then, public safety infrastructure, we're going to be looking to replace Fire Station Number Six, and then also completing plans for the police lobby expansion. And then, finally, our legislative advocacy program, we'll be working to complete that. So, those are the, that's, excuse me, the strategic plan as proposed. Funds for implementation of the plan will be included in the proposed fiscal year 1516 budget, and at this time, it's recommended that the City Council would adopt the 201516 strategic plan to implement the City Council priorities that were identified in the City Council's study session. And I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. And we're all part of that strategic plan. I move the item?
Second.
Please vote.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Next item, please.
The next item is 15B. It's approval of AAA Oils, Inc., doing business as California Fuels and Lubricants, and they request to renegotiate an existing sales tax rebate agreement with the City of Garden Grove. It's an award of a contract to Tierra West Advisors, Inc., to provide an economic analysis and authorize the appropriation of funds for the analysis. And Grace Lee, our Senior Economic Development Specialist from the Finance Department, is here to give her staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. The item before you for your consideration this evening is a request from California Fuels and Lubricants for renegotiation of the existing operating covenant agreement with the city for a split of sales tax proceeds. With City Council approval, staff will award a contract to Tierra West Advisors, Inc., to provide an economic analysis pursuant to AB 562, and to authorize the appropriation of $7,500 from the general fund for this contract. CFL's original 10-year agreement approved in 2013 requires CFL to exceed an established base amount of sales tax revenue to receive assistance, and to have invested $2 million into their business within five years of the agreement. Any amount received over the base amount would be shared 50/50 between the city and CFL with a cap of $2 million. To date, CFL has only received one payment of $12,045.88. In January 2015, CFL approached the city requesting to renegotiate their agreement to be more competitive in the fuel industry. Over the ensuing months, CFL representatives and staff have met on several occasions in an effort to better understand the market basis for the requested change and to consider a range of potential sales tax rebate scenarios. Ultimately, it was determined that while the parties could not reach agreement on a specific change in the sales tax rebate formula, it was important to move the item forward to City Council for consideration. Additionally, it was deemed necessary to undertake the required analysis before negotiating any further. On January 1, 2014, Assembly Bill 562 went into effect. Cities are now required to comply with the provisions of AB 562 for any economic development subsidies provided, such as sales tax rebate agreements. Staff and CFL have negotiated over several weeks on the appropriate sharing of financial responsibility for this report. Ultimately, the parties agreed to bring forward an equal split of the cost of the study, $7,500 for CFL and $7,500 by the city, with the city's contribution to be paid upon completion of the study. Staff recommends that the City Council authorize city staff to enter into a consultant services agreement with Tierra West Advisors, Inc., and to authorize a finance director to appropriate $7,500 from the general fund to pay for the study. This concludes my presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Do we have a motion?
I'd like to move it.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Next item, please.
The next item is approval of Cooperative Agreement Number C 53341 with the Orange County Transportation Authority for the arterial pavement management project construction of Booker Street rehabilitation and not-street rehabilitation. And Anna Neal, Senior Administrative Analyst with Public Works, is here to give her staff report.
Excuse me. Unfortunately, Anna Neal will not be with us tonight, so I'll do it. Well, thank you, Ms. Pomeroy. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, City Council is being asked to approve a cooperative agreement with the Orange County Transportation Authority to provide grant funding for the rehabilitation of two arterial streets. Excuse me, I'm sorry. The first street is Bookerst from Trastal Larson Avenue, and the second is not, from Garden Grove Boulevard to Lamson Avenue. I'm sorry. In September of 2014, staff submitted three grant applications to the OCTA under the arterial pavement management program to re... pavement management program to rehabilitate qualifying streets. The Brookers did not, were the grants that were successful. Both grants totaled $1 million, with a city match of $634,000. Again, that is for both streets. Thank you, Councilmember Pham. Should the council decide to approve the agreement tonight, the city will advertise the projects for construction, begin work in August. We expect to be complete with all work in the fall of 2016. The funding for the projects will be the OCTA grant and match monies from Measure M2 Turnback and Gas Tax. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available should you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Move approval.
Second. Please vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Next item, please.
Item 15D is an approval of an agreement with Archico Design Build to construct a material storage canopy, and Bill Murray is here to give the staff report.
Thank you, Ms. Palmeroy. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, council is being asked to award a contract to Archico Design Build to construct a material storage canopy at the city yard. The canopy is required per MPDS regulations to prevent stormwater contamination from 13 material storage bins that are used daily by our water division operators. The construction work will include minor demolition, foundation construction, erection of the canopy, which will measure 160 feet long by 60 feet wide, and it's 25 feet at its highest point, so it's a pretty big canopy. And they will furnish all of that work at a cost just under $300,000. This work will be paid for with water funds. On February 11 of this year, staff received and opened nine bids and determined that Archico Design Build was the lowest responsible bidder. Should the council decide to award the contract tonight, the contractor can begin construction in June, and we expect the project to be complete by the end of summer. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available should you have any questions.
Any questions?
I'll move it.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Next item, please.
Item 15E is an amendment to Chapter 5.12 of the Municipal Code Regarding Massage Regulations, and this is continued from the April 28 meeting. And Thomas Nixon, the city attorney, is here to give the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you may recall, this matter was presented to the city council at the last city council meeting, and pursuant to direction of the city council, notices were sent out to all of the massage establishments in the city, giving them notice of this hearing tonight, or, excuse me, meeting tonight, and that they were all provided with the opportunity to submit comments either to the city clerk's office with regard to the proposed ordinance or to come tonight and offer any comments. It's my understanding that the city clerk's office did not receive any comments. We certainly would have provided them to the city council if they had been received, and obviously, we've had no additional people come tonight to offer comments on it. I believe the council was also provided with information on what other cities within the county do with regard to closing time of the massage establishments. As you may recall, the draft ordinance which you have before you indicates that no massage establishment shall be operated between the hours of 9:00 PM and 7:00 AM, and I think the discussion, as I recall from the last meeting, was whether it might be more appropriate for a 10 o'clock closed time as opposed to a 9 o'clock closed time. I think the information that was provided to you with regard to what other cities are doing indicates that there were numerous cities that had 9:00 PM and a few additional cities, more than that, that had 10:00 PM as a closing time. So either timeframe appears to be within the relative accepted time zones of most of the other cities in the county. So with that, I would leave it to your discretion as to how to proceed on time and with regard to the ordinance.
Thank you.
I would like to make the suggestion that since the information that we have here from the staff indicate that half of the massage parlor operate until 10:00, and the other half is between, some of them operate until 12:00 AM, and some of them operate until 9:00 PM. So if we look at the staff report for city in Orange County, one of them closes at 7:00 PM, the other two until midnight, and six closes at 9:00, and 10 closes at 10:00. So with that, I would like to suggest that we would consider extending the time until 10:00 PM instead of 9:00.
I'm okay with that.
Me too.
Okay, so, is that a motion?
I would, we...
Mr. Mayor, that would be, and excuse me, Councilmember Bowie, but that would be a motion to approve the ordinance with modification of the provision, changing the closing time from 9:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
Yes, and I would like to move that.
Is that the only amendment you have? Yes? Is that the only, okay? Second. Please vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Great, thank you. Mr. Roder, any matters?
Mr. Mayor and members of city council, just two quick items. First of all, this Friday, the council will be holding a special meeting, closed session, to consider applications for the position of city manager on a permanent basis. We do not have anything scheduled for action that day that is to consider candidates. And also to let you know that we will be scheduling dates and times for all of you towards the end of this month, first part of next month, for consideration of the proposed fiscal year 2015-2016 budget. And we'll be setting inside time with you for study session, consideration of that document. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Beard?
Yeah, for the next council meeting, I'd like to place an agenda item or move, make this motion to develop a process to study and consider establishing district representation in the City of Garden Grove.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
I was wondering if it would be necessary at all for, you know, for us to consider districting. I have made this indication that to consider districting alone, I think is not appropriate. I think we should look into being a charter city in, to considering that. And so I don't know if it would make sense to either, to even put it on the agenda at this time, especially when we have so many things, you know, at stake here. We have a lot of important issues to discuss and to act around, and one of which is the hiring of the city manager. We just have the fire chief come onboard today, and I think, I think there's many more important things that we need to focus now, rather than to start a discussion of, you know, how should we press, you know, begin to take over, you know, to take on that challenge as districting. So I would like to substitute a motion to...
I'm sorry, can we have further discussion?
Okay.
We haven't heard from the person that made the motion.
Again, I don't, I don't care to discuss it now, I want to put it on the agenda to discuss it later on.
Sure.
So I think if we bring it to the next meeting, then you can bring up your points.
That's a very good point. This is the procedural motion to agendize the item for further discussion at a later meeting. So did you, the substitute motion would be what? I don't understand. For a procedural motion? Mr. Bowie?
Oh, that's fine, I withdraw my motion.
Great, thank you. Please vote.
Motion received, three yes votes to agendize and two no votes. That would be Councilmember Bowie and Councilmember Jones voting no.
And just for clarification, this is for discussion only, correct?
Right.
Okay. I mean, and the reason why, well, yes, is out of courtesy to Councilmember Beard. I'd like to hear him out and see what he has to say.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Bowie?
I would like to put on the agenda for discussion the World Museum, and I think we need to discuss that because it's been on a standstill for quite some time now. And so I would like to visit that issue and determine what do we want to do with that museum as we continue to spend staff times and money on that project, so let's take a look at that.
Great, I'll second that. Please vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Mr. Pham?
Just a few notes of, for public service on this coming Tuesday, on the 19th, at 7:30 AM, we have a blood drive here at the community center, so hopefully the community will come out to donate blood for a very worthy cause, to the Red Cross. This weekend, as you know, from the, this coming Thursday to Saturday, we have our strawberry festival. I think it was next, next week, right? After that, make sure you come out for that. There'll be cake service by our mayor and the city council on Friday, I believe. We have a race on Saturday morning, please come and join us for that. And on the 25th, will be Memorial Day, and Mr. Charles Mitchell stated very eloquently that, you know, we have to remember our veterans and who served to defend this country. On that day in particular, I'll be at St. Columban at 9:00. There'll be a service they do every year that's wonderful, please come out for that. And also at 10:00, I'll be helping to lay a wreath at Magnolia Park, so please join us if you can. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Just like to comment that next week is also the ICSC conference out in Las Vegas. So first year, I'm not going for a number of years just because I have other travel later that week, but that's been a very successful venue for us as a city in years past to attract a lot of economic development, including a lot of the major hotel deals and some of those connections that have come up in the past, so wishing our team success next week out in Vegas.
Great, thank you. I would like to agendize looking into our options for legal services. That is a motion.
Second.
Please vote.
The motion failed. There's two yes votes and three no votes, coming from Councilmember Bowie, Jones, and Pham.
Okay, I don't know why we don't want to look at our options, what they are. Some of the options could be expanding the contract, renegotiating the contract, so maybe sleep on it for a couple of weeks. I will bring it back again for consideration to agendize. We are on a timeline here, since our city attorney, Mr. Nixon, has indicated his retirement at the end of July. So this is something that we should do as a prudent measure to look for legal services appropriate to our city. Okay? All right, so, let's see. We have, are we going into the closed session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do need, following council member comments and requests, we do need a brief closed session with the council.
Okay, before we do that, I want to, I'm going to close the meeting later, but I would like to close the meeting in honor of Dr. Leonard Frank Kellogg, who is a longtime leader here in our city. He has served on the Garden Grove Unified School District Board of Education, he has served on our city commissions, he's served on many community boards, including the Children's Hospital of Orange County, and he was someone who was very inspirational to me personally. I, I didn't know that Dr. Kellogg was the, part of the Kellogg family that has the Kellogg House in Anaheim, which I visited as a kid with our, with our public school class, and we tried on the period costumes and whatnot, and churned our own butter, and it was a lot of fun. But later, I met Dr. Frank Kellogg and his wife Shirley Kellogg, and they have really shared their whole life to service. You know, Dr. Kellogg's wife Shirley is also on the board of Akeisha Adult Day Services, so I'll be closing tonight's meeting in memory of Dr. Kellogg. He is survived by his wife Shirley and daughters Karen, Jo Purdy, and Cheryl, and Harry Purdy, son Dick, Amy Kellogg, and dearest friend and son Longwin, sister Joanne Kellogg, brother Bill Carroll Kellogg, and eight grandchildren and seven great-grandchildren. So this time, we'll break for our closed session.